Off with the flag salute.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and do roll call.
Mr. Senator.
Larry, are you here?
Here.
Mr. Moss.
I'm here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Crabbe.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Brenton, absent. Mr. Denial.
Here.
Okay, we'll have our report from the planning director, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Thompson with the planning department filling in for Michael Johnson. Just first, an update on the forty-nine fire and the Placer County's response. As you know, on August thirtieth, Sunday, the forty-nine fire burnt an area in North Auburn. It was approximately three hundred and forty-three acres. It damaged sixty-three residences, was totally destroyed with three additional residences severely damaged. There was three commercial structures totally destroyed and another six that were damaged. There was numerous vehicles and numerous outbuildings that were damaged. On Monday, August thirty-first, the building department staff inspected every one of the parcels and posted signs on those parcels as to the severity of the damage. The planning department also posted flyers referring to the victims to a local assistance center. And that night, the fire victims were allowed into the burn area in the evening. On Tuesday, September first, the local assistance center opened, and that was opened at nine a.m. and went till nine p.m. It was open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of last week, and then again on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. Various county departments were represented, including the Cedar Agency, including building, planning, engineering, and surveying, were on-site and provided services, including replication of records for each of the parcels that were damaged, including issuance of demo permits right there, provided information and guidance on permits processing and additional support. There was also a number of different county departments and other agencies that were there, including the Red Cross, Salvation Army, PG&E, the Board of Supervisors were there, Health and Human Services, Environmental Health, and California Emergency Management Agency. Department of Motor Vehicles was there issuing pink slips and information. The Recorder's Office was there, the Assessor's Office. So there was a well representation there to help the victims of the fire. And there was a few meetings that were held, night meetings that were in the Planning Commission hearing chambers. One was on September first, and again, there was another one last night that was provided by the emergency services office. And Placer County is committed to assist the property owners in the rebuilding process there. So that's kind of an update on that. And moving on to the Placer County Conservation Plan, the city of Lincoln has signed the MOU with Placer County, so now the city and Placer County are partners, and the city will help share the costs in the PCCP update. And there should be a draft available of the plan in mid-fall, and staff will be presenting a draft of that plan to your commission. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Any question? No? Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the mic to anyone that wants to make any comments to the Planning Commission today on any items that you might have other than what's on our agenda today. So if there's anybody that would like to address the commission, now is your chance. Seeing none, I'll close it off, and we will go to our item number one, subdivision modification and variance, Lakewood subdivision lot seventy-nine. Roy?
Thank you, Chairman Denial. The applicant and property owner is requesting approval of a modification to the Lakewood subdivision final map and a variance to reduce the twenty-five-foot front setback requirement to six feet in order to allow an eight-foot-high concrete retaining wall to remain as constructed, and it would also have a side setback of zero feet from the property along the west. And also, a second variance is requested for a ten-foot, to the ten-foot west-side setback requirement to allow two feet in order for an eight-foot-high concrete retaining wall to remain as constructed below the single-family residence. This request, this item, was continued from the August thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, and also, both of the walls were constructed without any county approvals or This is the location at the Lakewood subdivision. Below Douglas Boulevard, you take Mooney Road and go to Sierra Drive. And this subdivision, Lakewood subdivision, was approved in December of nineteen fifty-five, so they no longer have an architecture review committee or an active homeowner association. This is an aerial view of the property. The zoning is residential, single-family, with a ten thousand square foot minimum. And also, looking at this, there is a front setback requirement from Sierra Drive and also Lake Shore Drive that's on the funnel map. The site plan shows the outline of the house in this area, and the wall was constructed in the front at a thickness of one foot thick here, and it goes right to the property boundary. And then the wall behind the house, below the house, has a two-foot setback from the west-side property boundary. So there's approximately eight feet, the side setback is ten feet, so there's eight feet of this wall that's within the west-side setback below the house. This is a photo of the wall below the house. This area right here is the newly-constructed concrete wall that's eight feet high below the residence. This shows the bottom side of the front wall, and we take the measurement from the lowest side of the wall, so you have a height here of eight feet. And then from the Sierra Drive, the wall, the concrete wall, is three feet high, which is the height that is allowed without a variance. You can have a three-foot-high wall, and you only need a building permit if a wall exceeds four feet or more. So from the Sierra Drive, it's showing as a three-foot-high wall. Staff would like to, our DRC would like to recommend approval for this project with an amendment to one of the conditions. If I could just refer the commission to attachment A and condition number two. In the last sentence of condition number two, it states a building setback of six feet, and then in brackets, "or as documented by the survey," and we'd like to add, "and as approved by DPW," in the brackets, and then continues, "from the Sierra Drive property boundary shall be shown on the map." So we're adding after the word "survey," "and as approved by DPW." And that concludes the staff report. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any, any questions? I guess my only question, and I'm sure engineering, you've sort of stated it, that it's a one-foot wall and stuff, but from an engineering standpoint, the retaining portion of the wall meets all the engineering standards to satisfaction of public works and everything.
Actually, they have not obtained a grading permit, and so we have not seen calculations for the wall. That's part of the conditions of approval to obtain a grading permit and to prepare design calculations for the wall that we would then review.
Okay.
No question? Yeah. Go ahead.
Wall in the front, could you go back to the side?
Nikki?
There you go.
From the front portion of the house, I think that might be the garage, the part that's sticking out the most.
Yes.
From there to the wall, how much of a slope is that? And how much dirt is actually retained as opposed to simply being fenced?
This gives some idea. The property overall, after you get below the house, is approximately twenty-five percent. This area, I'm not sure, I really have not seen it before this was developed, because this, this was constructed in fall of two thousand and eight, and it was brought to our code enforcement's attention because some neighbor, I'm not sure which neighbor, some neighbor in the area called code enforcement. I know from talking to the property owner that there was quite a slope there, and he's had some issues and problems that he would provide to the Planning Commission about a motorcycle going over it and a car falling in it and stuff like that because of the existing low wall that was there and the slope. So this was definitely dug out and excavated as part of this recent work in fall of two thousand and eight.
So besides the retaining, there was excavation and grading done as well?
Yes.
Okay, that, that, thanks.
And you can see the, you can see this part is the garage, and there's some, the doors on the side here that existed prior to building this.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So at any rate, just thinking ahead, you know, we take action on the variance, and then the Department of Public Works looks at it to see if it's going to meet the standards of supporting the dirt and that kind of stuff. So at that point in time, the property owner could still be subject to removing a portion of the wall or making some changes. Is that correct?
That is correct. He would have to comply with the conditions that are attached in attachment A, and I know there's, you know, several there from engineering and surveying.
So then, then basically, the variance, if it were granted, could become inapplicable? Or I guess what happens then?
I think it's typical of any, any use permit or variance, you have a two-year expiry date typically, and if you cannot meet one or more of those conditions, it could be null and void. You haven't, you don't really have approval then.
Okay. Yeah, that is my question. I was just thinking of what comes first here, the chicken or the egg? I understand it now. Thank you.
Any other questions, Larry?
Yeah, I have a question of public works, I guess. How are you going to verify how that wall was put together? Is there a certain amount of trust you're going to have to put into this?
Well, I would assume that the homeowner has some sort of plan for that construction that they can show us how it was constructed, and they'll have to have an engineer stamp that, that that's how it was constructed. So they may have to do some testing on segments of the wall to show how far their reinforcing is. They can do some, some, I think it's magnetic, checking where the reinforcement is if they don't have, they don't know how it was done, so.
If it should come back as not meeting the necessary engineering standard, could they, if there's something, take out another permit?
Do some additional work as part of this?
Sure, yeah, that would be what they would have to do. They would either have to maybe remove the wall and rebuild it or do some other engineering solutions to...
Okay. But that's all part of the package as far as you're concerned?
That would be what we would review, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to answer some of the questions?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Secretary, and members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to stand in front of you and bring up a couple of points in regard to the, to the wall that was built.
Oh, you're, can you give us your name and...
Oh, yes. Osvaldo Koch. I, I own the property in question. Excuse me, I got a really bad cold, so, besides the accent. The wall was built to replace an old, poorly-built wall. When I purchased the property, there was a wall there. It was built out of concrete blocks. It was shorter than this wall. Am I moving all this? Okay. It was actually built out of a concrete wall, concrete blocks. The wall was built in the same spot. However, because it was low, the slope allowed for access into the house, into the front yard of the house per se. In the summer of oh seven, what prompted me to build a wall is that in the summer of oh seven, a truck, a pickup truck parked too close to the downslope fell into my yard. The blocks gave way, and the truck actually fell. We had to bring winches to pull the kid out of the, the front yard. Fortunately, my children were not playing there, and the tragedy was averted. Later, in the, in the summer of oh eight, a motorcycle, a motorcycle decided to use the slope as an all-terrain course and also went into my lot. The house next door, the lot has been vacant for a couple of years. They are now building a house. But in order to prove this point, that kids like this open land in order to practice their all-terrain skills, a kid went with a truck all the way down to the hitch on Lake Shore on the lot next door, and he had to be, the police came over, the truck had to be pulled with winches. Fortunately, again, there were no children playing there. So not having any sort of retaining in here presented not only aesthetic situation, but a real dangerous situation. Then, in addition to that, I'd like to add that due to my ignorance, I made mistakes. I called the county to inquire about putting up a wall, and the, I talked to the clerk's office, and they indicated that if I built a wall three feet or lower, I did not need a permit. My ignorance led me to believe that I was measuring from grade, from the street level up, and I have three feet in there. Actually, it's an inch lower than three feet, so I thought I'm okay, only to find out later that the measurement actually gets taken place from the inside out. So that was ignorance on my part. In addition, I'd like to add that this flat land where you see the pickup truck and the boat parked, that was actually flat like that before. The old wall ended where this wall ends, probably a foot farther to the left, and the block wall was coming up, and it ceased to exist at about three feet, but it was actually falling into pieces. So that's the story of the wall, and that's all I can add, Chairman.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll just, we heard some concerns that you have to have the wall reviewed after the fact, and so I guess maybe a question that, you know, that kind of comes up is, when you constructed the wall, what kind of process did you go through to make sure that you would meet any standards that come up?
I'm glad you bring that back up, Mr. Johnson. Actually, I have extensive pictures of the building of the wall. It has extensive rebar, a three-quarter-inch rebar placed at sixteen inches on center on a square. It has a very deep footing, and I have those measurements in a hand-drawn plan that I could actually present to the engineering and survey department and be able to prove actually what's inside the wall. I have the receipts from Tykert or the concrete providers on the strength of the concrete is not five foot, five-sack concrete, it's actually six-sack concrete, and it's a special mix for, for additional strength. I think the wall is, in my ignorant opinion, it's, it's very, very sturdy. It's one foot thick, but I could, I could bring information to the engineering and survey department to prove this point.
Yeah. Thank you. That, that answers my question. And then, as far as neighbors go, are they going to see anything different than they saw before?
No. This is pretty much, this is finished. The neighbors have all looked at it. There's actually much more going on next door. You can see the construction going next door. It's a huge house, and they're building walls now down with whatever setbacks. They have been authorized, but I am not doing anything else. This is pretty much it. It was done in order to prevent vehicles from coming into my yard.
I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of amount of change from the original wall that you're replacing in terms of visibility or how it looks?
Oh, no, not at all. This is a, well, the three foot, the three foot from the front right there, you can see that it actually provides a stopping wall for vehicles not to fall into my yard, but I am many, many, many feet below the roof of the house, so it's really not blocking anything except my ugly vehicle.
So otherwise, the only change is you have a three-foot higher wall there than what you had before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Harry, did you...
Just a quick question. Is this engineered by an engineer? Or...
No, this is actually not engineered by an engineer, but I have prints and plans, hand-drawn, showing the steel used and the, the construction of the steel, the grade of the steel is actually the higher grade instead of, I think rebar goes grade forty or grade sixty. We use the higher grade, and the size of the rebar is actually thicker than, than, I think it's half inch or, I don't remember exact number, but I have all that information in writing with receipts, with pictures of the construction prior to the concrete being poured. So the engineering department could actually see all that.
Does, does the wall sit on a footing or is it...
Yes.
Restanding?
No, no, no. It sits on a footing.
Okay.
A rather deep, wide footing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I, I do have one question for, for staff on that, because you said that he needed a, at the end of the day, a stamped engineer plan?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So you understand probably one of the things you'd want to do right off the bat if we approve this is probably go to an engineer, take all your pictures, all your information, maybe take him out to the site, have him verify it, and then, yeah.
Have him, take him back to lunch.
So, yeah. So, so that way, instead of taking your pictures into him, because basically he's, the planning stated that they need something that's stamped.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a request to the engineering and surveying department. If I may present all this information, if you feel that you may be satisfied with this, could we waive the engineering permit? If you are fully satisfied, given that you guys are engineers already, if I show you everything that I have, if at that point you indicate, no, we want the stamp, I would be glad to comply. However, given that I have so much material, could I bring it up to you?
We actually would require it be designed by a registered engineer. That's, that's required.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Nothing lost. We're asking, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Is anyone in the public like to address this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close it off and bring it back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Anybody make a motion? Well, Mr. Chairman, if nothing else, I'll move in the approval of the, of the findings proposed by the department review committee and the subdivision modification and the variance as submitted and as the conditions were suggested. Recommend approval. Yeah, modified. Okay. Have a motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now you need to go see an engineer. Okay. An inexpensive one. We, we'll go ahead to item number two, zoning administrator repeal of a minor use permit for Forest Hill Public Safety Facility. Alex, you're up.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The item before you this morning, as the chairman said, is an appeal of the zoning administrator's June approval of the Forest Hill Public Safety Facility. I think you all will recall that we continued this hearing from the August thirteenth date in order for the administrative services department to explore some opportunities to make some modifications to the project in response to the appellant's concerns. With that, I'd like to begin with just a very short background of the project to bring you all up to speed, which I know you have the reports, and then we'll discuss just in brief the more significant issues of the appeal. Looking here at the project site off of Bath Road and Forest Hill Road, about a mile to the northeast to Forest Hill. And in two thousand and seven, the Board of Supervisors authorized the county administrative services department to award contracts to the Forest Hill Telephone Company to construct landline telephone infrastructure for the Iowa Hill Rural Telecommunications Infrastructure Project, which would bring telephone service to that community for the first time. And concurrent with those authorizations were also mandates to do upgrades to the county's interoperable radio network, to construct a parallel all-digital network to replace the existing analog network. Part of those projects included this project site here, and the zoning administrator heard that minor use permit back in June. That minor use permit was approved. During that hearing, the zoning administrator received testimony from the DRC as well as the IT Division Manager, Jerry Gamas, and also heard from several persons who lived around the project site who later filed an appeal of that decision. As stated, the administrative services department has submitted to the planning department some proposed modifications to the project in response to portions of that appeal. That appeal is, includes specifically ten grounds of appeal, but is centrally based on the assertion that the facility would be better suited to an alternative location on the project site or a different property, and that it does not qualify for a Class III categorical exemption from SEQA. Move here. This is an overall aerial, obviously, of the project site. The approved communications site from the ZA hearing is located here. Here, we're looking at zoning, so we have these large industrial properties that are located in the middle of some mixed residential and residential forest zoning property was the location of part of the old Forest Hill mill. This is the approved project lease area from the ZA hearing. I'll move forward one more, because I'll tell a little better story of where we're going. The appellants have stated that the communications facility could be sited in another location, the western portion of the property that would minimize the view of the tower from surrounding properties and would diminish noise impacts from the backup generator and air conditioning units. The administrative services department has heard and considered those concerns and is proposing to modify the project as shown here, actually relocating the tower to the southeast portion of the site. That location is three hundred and ninety feet approximately to the south of the nearest inhabited residential property boundary. There is an undeveloped residential forest property over here, and it's approximately two hundred yards from Forest Hill Road to the west. Planning staff has determined that the proposed modified tower location would result in improved land use compatibility with surrounding land uses, and the administrative services department has determined that this alternative project site would meet the project objectives. The appellants have stated that the project does not qualify for a Class III categorical exemption from SEQA because a one hundred and eighty-foot-tall tower... exemption from SEQA because a 180-foot tall tower would be the tallest facility in central Placer County and that it would result in aesthetic impacts from Forest Hill Road, which is designated as a scenic roadway in the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan. The zoning administrator determined that this project is within the scope of a Class III categorical exemption from SEQA, and in accordance with those guidelines, those exemptions do include extensions of water mains, sewage, electrical gas, and other utility extensions. And this project is construction of, extension of existing communications infrastructure. These are some views here. This is traveling to the project site on Forest Hill Road. Bath Road is right here. Project is over in this area. And then this, again, is from the intersection of Forest Hill Road and Bath Road, looking east at the project. The tower would be approximately behind the trees in this location. Here's some other views. The appellants have stated that there currently exists no ambient noise at the project site and that the emergency generator would result in a 67 decibel sound level. The approved project site located at the north end would have resulted in a modest amount of noise at the nearest residential property boundary from the air conditioner units and the backup generator. However, staff determined and the zoning administrator concurred that the project noise levels would be within the 60 decibel sound limitations. The reasons for that are the layout of the site. I'm back up here so you can see that. The generator is actually located on the south side of the concrete equipment shelter blocking the noise. It's also located with a manufacturer's provided sound enclosure, and the lease area fence would be constructed of solid board, which would be overlapping, further reducing the noise. Back up there. Staff has determined that with the modified project location, sound would be reduced to levels that are not distinguishable by the human ear, being 400 feet south of the nearest residential property boundary. I think the only exception to that could be if the generator were operating in the middle of the night when sounds are, are slightly more audible. The appellants stated that the project will negatively impact property values of homes within sight of the tower. The project is zoned for industrial uses, which may include several more intensive uses than this, and the zoning administrator determined that that would not be an issue considering the battery of uses that could be approved on this project site. Lastly, the appellants stated that the required public notice was not provided to all property owners located within the applicable radius of the project site. However, our records show the total of 22 property owners, including all property owners within 300 feet of the exterior boundaries of the project site, did receive notice. And additionally, I field verified the posting of the site the week prior to the hearing that those notice of minor use permit posters were up. With that, the Development Review Committee is recommending that the planning commission grant the appeal of the minor use permit, in part to the extent that it relates to the relocation of the communications facility to the southwest corner of the site, as shown on the modified site plan, and deny the remainder of the appeal based on the following findings and attached recommended conditions of approval in your report, which do include modifications to conditions 1, 15, and 20. Those modifications are to the description of the project to confirm that it is in fact going to be relocated to the southeast corner of the project site. Condition 15 pertains to driveway improvements, and the modification to condition 20 is the exercise date. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those for you at this time.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Alex, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Please.
County first.
Okay, if you could.
County first.
Oh, well, that was the county.
Oh. Administrative Services. Whoever up here wants to speak.
Oh, is there, oh, is the applicant? I guess there's another person or...
That's okay, we can defer until...
So that way you can maybe answer questions? Okay. We'll shift gears and step one ahead and then step back. Okay.
I can sit down again.
Oh, that's, that's okay, because that way, maybe if you ask some questions, we can sort of wrap it up at, at one time. Go ahead and just give us your name.
My name is Sharon Hardy, and I'm spokesperson for the Bath Tower Coalition. The Bath Tower Coalition wishes to extend our appreciation to Mr. Jerry Gamas, IT Division Manager, and Alex Fish, Associate Planner, for working with us in mitigating the new placement of the Forest Hill Public Safety Tower and for addressing our other appeal concerns. We would like to thank Mr. Gamas for attending the August Forest Hill Forum meeting and being present for our presentation, for being available to discuss project issues and answering questions at that meeting, and for taking positive steps to resolve some of the coalition's issues. And we thank Mr. Fish for staying in contact with us throughout the last 30 days. The coalition accepts the revised site plan relocating Forest Hill Public Safety Facility to the southeast corner of the project site, as spelled out in the attachment D, proposed modified site plan that was attached to the Development Review Committee's report dated August 31st of 2009, submitted by Mr. Alex Fish. The coalition is not confident that all of our issues concerning possible increase in the ambiance noise levels from the air conditioning units has been totally satisfied. The Development Review Committee staff response says the noise levels will be well within the 60 decimals noise limits and that the modified project location will satisfy the noise concerns. The coalition reserves the right to verify these findings after the completion of the project, and we will contact the proper agencies if we find that the noise levels don't fall within the Placer County general plan. The Development Review Committee staff response dismisses, dismisses the coalition's concern about the tower's effect on property values and the, and the less than satisfactory visual impact concerns we had. The coalition wants to assure all of you, there are no redeeming qualities nor aesthetic value in a 190-foot tower with 12 attached antennas built in the vicinity of any residential community. We are sure the staff's response would be quite different if the tower was being built in their front yard. We do feel you will have a site security problem, issue there. Those of us living in our homes adjacent to the property for the past 30-plus years know this property as a magnet for illegal and less than desirable and acceptable activities. We recommend you consider gating the Bath Road entrances. The Sheriff Department is very familiar with this property. We hope you will take proactive, proactive measures and secure your tower, your facility site. The Bath Tower Coalition hopes your experience with this project has brought to the forefront the importance of working early on with anticipated affected communities and residences for any project that the county develops. Again, we'd like to thank Mr. Gamas and Mr. Fish for working with the Bath Tower Coalition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Go ahead and...
Hello. My name is Kelly Scanlon. Do you each have this packet of papers about the revised?
Yeah.
Because I have some comments on several of the items that are listed here. I'm still a little concerned about the Class III SEQA exemption, considering this a utility extension, because it's actually providing a new service to areas that were not served before. Kind of semantics, but it depends on how you look at it. I also have a concern. This states that the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan designates Forest Hill Road to Robinson Flat as a scenic roadway, and they're proposing that the trees along that road are going to screen any view of that tower, and that is not accurate. That's not a solid screen of trees through there. There's many gaps and openings for entrances and exits to that property that are going to make that tower clearly visible. I also still have an issue with the, the noise level. It states in here that staff has further determined that the proposed modified project location would reduce project noise level at the nearest residential property boundary level to low, levels below those that can be distinguished by the human ear. To me, that's an opinion, that's not a fact based on science or data that's been collected. That's somebody's opinion of what it will sound like. There's basically not a lot of screening out there. You can see that picture right there. The area surrounding the tower has very low vegetation, smaller trees. The property edge has the tall trees, so it's basically an open area out to the homes that are closest to the property line. I also have some questions about the, the co-location issue. So initially, when this was approved by the zoning administrator, it was only for the use of essentially the emergency services. There was no co-location allowed. And now I see that we're already opened up to PCWA, Sebastian Telephone Company, and potentially other agencies. The zoning administrator did not want a tower out there with multiple dishes because it was going to be visually disruptive or, you know, basically ugly to look at, but already they're predicting that there's going to be several additional Placer County agencies located on that tower. From a personal perspective, if there's a giant tower in Forest Hill, I would rather have that available to cellular carriers or anybody else that wants to go on there rather than having multiple large towers in our community. And the visual impacts, you know, the, the trees that are closest to the project site are maybe 40, possibly 60 feet. So the tower is going to be three to four times higher than the existing vegetation. And you've seen the diagram up here where they show that and location to the trees adjacent to the property. I also have a concern about the color scheme that's proposed. They're talking about a dark gray-green color. It's mostly the tower you're going to see. It's not going to be in contrast to trees. Needs to be blending into the sky, not the vegetation. There's also a statement in here that says, "The proposed wireless communications facility will be consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood and will not be contrary to its orderly development." You know, the immediate neighborhood, yes, that's undeveloped industrial property, but it's surrounded by single-family, single-story homes. I have a real hard time with that statement. And the last thing I wanted to talk about also was that site security issue. There are ongoing problems over there. It's basically an attractive nuisance. The property owner, Satute, has been very uncooperative with policing that property, even posting no trespassing signs, and he refuses to gate the property. This, I personally have had gates torn down on that property that protect my own parcel from people coming in from there, and I think that the tower is just going to be a huge attraction for vandalism also. Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll have the applicant come up and maybe can respond to some of the questions.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Gamas. I'm the IT Division Manager with Administrative Services for Placer County and the project manager on this, on the site development. I think Alex has done a very good job in explaining to you folks what our project consists of, and it is one of about 26 sites that we're building throughout the county to support our public safety agencies. We have a federal mandate to migrate from our analog platform that we are currently at to a new digital platform so that we can enhance interoperability amongst our first responders, any agency from law enforcement to the fire to animal control, which is, plays a big role in evacuations, transit for, for also evacuation. So what we're trying to do is develop a interoperable communication system throughout the county that's going to serve these agencies and any other mutual agencies that come into our county for assistance. This site here happens to be the primary site for the Forest Hill Divide. What we did when, when we were looking at the site, we were trying to identify a location that's going to serve the entire community without impacting the historic, the historic community of the Forest Hill downtown area. So we were looking at, at a location that would be zoned industrial, that would have the least impact, and also allow us to build a tower that would be less than 200 feet so that we would not have a light beacon on it glowing, you know, 24 hours a day, especially into the night. So this is the site that we have selected based on quite extensive research. We've looked at over 12 different locations. We were fortunate enough to be able to accommodate a lot of the concerns that were brought up as part of the appeal. With regards to the safety and, and, and gating, we will have an entrance at this side of the property off of Bath Road into our property, so this will be gated. Currently, there's a gate here, and this, this, this is the only other entrance into the property, and we can work with Mr. Satute on putting possibly a gate there. This is also a staging area for public safety. When we do have multiple agencies coming in, such as fire trucks and whatnot, they, they develop this as base camp, so we would just have to make sure that whatever gate we have, we don't impede on, on their operations. With regards to the trees and, and the height of the tower, 20 years ago, these trees were much smaller and as they were throughout the county, and we were building about 85 to 100-foot towers. Since then, these trees have grown. Those towers are now, remain at the same height level, and those services are impacted the way we deliver these, these radio signals. So what we are doing is we're building a system that has a 20-year plan. So we're building 180-foot towers because we know within the next 20 years, those trees are going to grow, and we don't want to impact public safety. We want to ensure that we have a good return on our investment for developing these sites throughout the county. So this isn't anything specific to Forest Hill. We are facing these challenges everywhere else that we go. We just recently installed a tower here at our DeWitt Center. We have towers down in southwestern Placer that we've already installed, and they're at the same height. When you look at the actual tower versus some of the photo simulations that we provided during the last hearing, they're, they're right, right on. I mean, I, there hasn't been one that has come out and said, oh, that didn't look anything like our photo simulation. So we don't think that that's going to be an issue based on past installations that we have done. With that, I would really just turn it over to you folks for any questions you might have, and I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Rich, you look like you.
Let me see, there was, the site, you know, I'm familiar with the site. It's, it is a very open site, and so I imagine from the residences, it would be somewhat visible, but I guess in terms of the issue with the Forest Hill Road, there's a pretty good vegetation screen along the road. I'm wondering if, is this going to be really visible from the Forest Hill Road?
If you're driving along the road, you will not be able to see it. No, no. We've, we've looked at that, and we've done some photo simulations from that location, and you will not be able to see it.
Let me see, on the, yeah, I'm pretty familiar with the growing, tree growing sites of this area, the Forest Hill Divide, and the height of the tower being 180 feet, you know, I can imagine you got to get over the ridge if you're going to get to Iowa Hill, and that's one of the factors, but also I do agree on the growth of the trees, because I know that in this particular site index, that actually the trees may beat your tower sometime or come very close because it's, there is very capable of producing trees that are up to 180 feet high. So I support that factor. Let me see, this, as well as, you know, incident command using the site and stuff, it's also quite frequently used by the events that go through Forest Hill.
That is, that is correct. Tavistap recently utilized this location as a staging area as well.
So that's a pretty frequent impact there. And you mentioned that you may have a chance with Mr. Satute to maybe better gate the property?
Yeah, the, the only gate that's, that's missing is the one right at the intersection of Bath and Forest Hill Road, so we certainly can work with him. He has been very, very supportive of the project and of our efforts, so I don't think that it's going to be an issue, but again, I would definitely bring that to him. It may be a matter of cost as to who's going to pay for the gate. It may be a matter of cost as to who's going to pay for the gate, but certainly, that's something that we would be willing to...
Otherwise, the property is fenced all the way around?
The property is not fenced. Our site will be fenced. We will have actually two fences. We will have the wood fence for a sound barrier, and within the wood fence, we're going to have a chain-link fence as well, so...
Is this going to be a county-owned property or is it leased property?
It's leased property. We have a 20-year lease on the site. So the county will be managing the site. What we have had in the past is any opportunity we get to co-locate with cell towers and cell vendors, we jump on those opportunities. Unfortunately, in the Forest Hill Divide, the number of cell users prohibits or at least deters cellular carriers from building in that area. We do have two towers in that area currently. Our current tower is up behind the cemetery, but unfortunately, it's not large enough to support this new technology inside, so that's one of the reasons why we have to build a new tower. One of the other things, one of the other advantages of owning the site versus co-locating or being on a cellular tower is cellular companies usually build the towers, and then a year or two later, they sell them to companies that manage these sites. And you start to lose control as to how many folks are on the tower, and you start running into interferences with your signals. With public safety, that becomes a real critical issue. So what we have done as a county and in support of our public safety agencies is really tried to mitigate that by taking control of our towers. And not only that, but a lot of the funding, the majority of the funding that we are getting are federal funding from Homeland Security monies and grants, so it prohibits us from using federal dollars and then turning those assets over to a private agency to operate. So that's another reason why we are now in the tower site business.
Is there a chance, you mentioned cellular service and that type of thing, is there... It sounds like this tower is primarily dedicated to public safety, law enforcement, government agencies.
That is correct, and it's...
Is there a chance that other type of, you know, there's some fairly large timber landowners and, you know, maybe cellular companies that may want to... Is this going to be off-limits to anybody except for public agencies?
Based on the zoning administrator's decision, it is off-limits for cellulars, and it was not designed for cellular carriers.
So if somebody comes in with a proposal, it would have to go back through the process?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, I think that... Well, I guess another point, I guess last time we heard that this tower was primarily to establish communications in the Iowa Hill area. It sounds like now they would kind of have a different focus on the process, whereas public safety and public agencies...
Actually, it's the opposite. The tower was originally designed for public safety. The Iowa Hill grant came after we had developed this plan. What happened is, again, the Administrative Services Department is the fiscal agent for the Iowa Hill project as well. So in an effort not to build two towers in the community, we decided to co-locate the Iowa Hill infrastructure on our public safety tower, and we realized that the projects were pretty much in parallel with each other, so it worked in our favor, and it also prevented us from having to develop two towers. So really, what happened here is our tower planning process was progressing forward, and this opportunity came, and so we decided to co-locate the two together, again, to eliminate the need for two towers in the Forest Hill area.
Okay, so you made the determination that the Iowa Hill needs fit within the public safety area.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Harry?
Is there any way of camouflaging that tower?
I had a, took a ride up into Sierra County about a year ago, out of Reno, and there were a number of towers along the roadway, and they all seemed to have some kind of greenery hanging on them, and I was surprised to see that. Is that something that can be done with a tower like this until the trees get high enough?
Well, there's two types of towers. Again, we're supporting public safety, so we have the Essential Services Act that we have to conform with, we have to comply with. But there's two types of towers. One is a monopine, which looks like a tree, and the other is a lattice tower. Unfortunately, the monopine limits the sides or the mounting surface that we have on towers to support our equipment. The tree would have to be much taller to be able to support the number of, the amount of equipment that we have slated for this site. So that's why the lattice tower, which has three sides to it, which then you could mount hardware on all three sides, anything that we would try to do to that tower is going to be visible regardless. You could have a green tower, you can have a gray tower, you can have a blue tower. I agree with the appellant. Over time, that tower will blend into the skyline if we were just to leave it the way it is, but we are willing to work with and comply with the zoning administrator's recommendation to either paint it blue or, I'm sorry, green or gray. And I think we selected was the gray so that it could blend in more into the sky than a green would. Green, you just have this green tower above the tree line as you get into the property. Again, what we found with our other installations is that if you leave the tower alone and you paint the antenna equipment to the same color, it will blend into the skyline over a matter of less than 24 minutes. And that's just because it gets weathered, rain, wind, dust.
Do we have a tower at baseline and fit them in out in that area?
We do not. Actually, our tower that we have, we have, there's a small tower by the fire station. The way we serve that area is from the Thermaland site and from the Sunset Ridge up on the Sunset Camp or Sunset Development, there's a tower there by the water agency, by the water towers. We have about 160-foot tower there.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Okay, if, no other questions? Okay. No, I've closed it off. I think heard all the different comments. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action Discussion.
Well, you know, I can understand the concerns of the neighbors when something like this comes in the neighborhood and concerns about what changes it may make to their lifestyle. But, you know, I think for the Forest Hill area, this tower is a very important addition to community communications, particularly as it relates to public safety, is a challenge in the community, and to have the ability to do that make it very important. And like I mentioned before, you know, I can appreciate the visibility. You know, I've seen, I know in the neighborhood I live, the water agency had a tank up on top of the hill, and they went to the neighbors, and the neighbors all wanted to paint it blue, but you paint it blue, and it doesn't always match the sky anyway, because the sky is a hard blue to paint, so it's consistently the same color all the time. But basically, I think from the Forest Hill Road, I agree that I don't think anybody traveling on the road is going to notice this tower being there. So at any rate, as far as, I guess I'm concerned, when you look at the balance here, I think community-wide, this is a very important structure that needs to go in.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, want to make a motion in?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission grant the appeal of this minor use permit. In part to the extent that it relates to the relocation of the communications facility to the southwest corner of the project site, as shown in the modified site plan submitted by the project applicant, and deny the remainder of the appeal based on the following findings and attached recommendation conditions of approval, and particularly the conditions of approval that have been modified by the relocation of the tower.
Got a motion and second? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
And just for clarification, that includes the CEQA finding and the conditions of approval as well as all the other findings in the staff report.
That's correct, yeah. Thank you. Yes. Okay, motion carries. Anybody should appeal, it should be filed at the Planning Department, and time to file appeals, 10 calendar days, and the appeal fee is $495. Okay, with that, I think our meeting is concluded. Thank you all for coming today and...
We'll come to you soon.
She'll see.